Well, they may have been in the dark. I thought that was the way it was.
What's that thermos?
I never touched it.
I didn't say you did of disaster.
Don't believe me. Seventy-one. Now, it's sixty-seven.
She can't do math.
I didn't touch the heads with it, nothing on my microscope.
Seventy-two is better.
Please. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jacob, would you hold the roll, please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
O'Grich?
Smith?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Nash?
Here.
Ninsenza?
Here.
Six members present, one absent.
Okay, I received a call from this O'Grich. She said she was out of town of business and unable to attend the evening. Okay, we proceed down the agenda with the minutes. Is there anyone who has not received the March 7th copy of the minutes? Is there anyone who has any questions on the minutes? If not at this time, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes from the March 7th meeting. Second. You have a motion and a second. We'll now have a roll call. Who?
Butler? Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Garage?
Yes.
Ninsenza?
Yes.
All members present.
Okay, thank you. Minutes for the March 7th meeting have been approved. Okay, with nothing on the agenda for new business or citizens carrying your correspondence, so we will move right directly to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Met with a constituent in this past two-week period regarding some concerns she had in the city. I also spoke to the warden at the prison out by the college, and they asked me to come out for him. He would like to have a meeting with me to show me what they are doing for emergency preparedness and to kind of work with the city with some of the things they have. I also met with Jeremy and Mr. Lash regarding some of the paving in St. Clairville on that timetable and the inavailability of asphalt and all kind of fun things like that. I spoke with the HEAP office to see if they still had funds for people who were having difficulty paying for their utilities. Yes, they do, so please reach out to the H-E-A-P, HEAP, or C-A-C office if you need help. Met with Jeremy and Anita last week regarding some of the water loss issues we've had in the city. We also had an appreciation lunch for our wonderful staff. That ice storm in February brought forth a lot of hard work and extra hours. We appreciated their commitment to the city, so last Thursday we had a lunch and asked everyone to come up and have lunch on the city. Met with, at the commissioner's office, with J.D. Vance, who's a candidate for the Ohio Senate. We met with the law director a couple of times regarding city issues and legislation for tonight. Had a meeting with the citizen who wished to express her thanks to Jeremy and the street crew for taking care of an issue down on, down behind St. Mary's. Met with Jeremy. We were discussing some issues with recyclable containers, something that were overflowing, creating a health hazard down by the rec center. I'm going to be speaking with the administrator of the J.B. Green team about that. I also had the privilege to attend a welcome home parade for Kayden Stout. He's the first St. Clairsville wrestler to bring home a state championship, quite an accomplishment. And Gan and Kaz Mersky, who also came in place in the state wrestling tournament, that's quite accomplishments, and I appreciate, gentlemen, you're bringing such positive attention to our school and to our town. We're also planning for the Arbor Day celebration, which is slated for May the 6th. We once again, for the 21st year in a row, are named a Tree City, which is quite an honor, and the details for the celebration will follow. I know they'll be at 1:00 P.M. down by the rec center, but details will follow as we get closer. That's about it, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One comment I'll make is all of our athletic programs are excellent. They represent the town very well. The one exception, or not exception, to represent well was young Kayden Stout was the state champion this year, and that, in fact, was the first time in the history of St. Clairsville Wrestling that they have won a state championship. So he not only won it, that's the first time. Okay, does anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there, in the past, have they ever invited, like, the state champion wrestler here to council meeting?
I don't know, but that's a great idea.
And did our cheerleaders not with state also, or?
If they did, then I'd...
I kind of think about that. They've won five or six.
Okay.
And we probably, they should, they've been recognized but not actually in a council meeting. I don't know.
Yes.
That's probably is something that...
To bring the kids up, you mean? I think that's awesome. I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Let's invite them.
That's a lot of major accomplishments.
Sure is.
Okay, any other questions for the mayor?
Sure.
Okay, we'll move on to the service director.
Good evening. Good evening, council. I'm going to mix this up a little bit, or I'm going to go over the legislation items first, but I wanted to hit on the budget stuff before let you know what's kind of going on. In the budget, we had a price for a mini excavator. It has gone up in approximately $20,000. Backyard machine went up about $18,000. Our servers went up about $3,000. And based off of the recent fuel charges, we're estimating that our fuel budget is going to be short in a deficit by about 80K. So we're starting already to look at potential cuts in items that we had in the budget that we're not going to be getting anymore or going to hold off on until we can see what happens and goes through it. One of the things is, one of the dump trucks, that one specialized dump truck that had the changeable beds, Thomas has sold it a week before the budget was passed, so we missed it by this much, and they have no idea when they're going to get anything else back in, so. Legislation items before tonight, we've got 2022-11. That's the ODOT salt order. I know we're just hitting into spring, but we just got the email on that on the 28th. We're asking for emergency, but it can be multiple readings. We actually have three meetings before it's due. It's due April 29th, but with the emergency legislation, I can't wait 30 days if we do multiple readings, so it needs to be emergency, but can be three separate readings. The next one, 2022-12, is the equipment purchase. There's been some debate back and forth. That's the two items that are on there, the backyard machine and the mini excavator. Those were specific line items in the budget, but with the price increase, we thought it better to risk on the side of caution to bring it to council first to let them know that we're going to buy that. One of the issues we have, I had mentioned this in the finance committee, is if the backyard machine, there's one left in stock right now at the company. If we don't get it, they're not anticipating having anything else available until September of 2023. We're not even talking September of 2022. We're talking September of 2023, and we're a little worried that by then it's probably going to be up $40,000 or $50,000 instead of just the $20,000. So that I would like to have as emergency, just to be able to buy that stuff because we're kind of on borrowed time with that now. 2022-13, oil and gas lease per council's request at the last meeting. That's emergency. They did get back with us. There is only seven parcels that they're interested in. It's kind of weird how they pick which ones they're interested in when there's some other ones that are right next to them that they're not, but those are in your packets, too. They're offering $4,000 an acre and 20% royalties, which would be about $251,000 and change. The next one was 2022-14, National Road Bike Way. Same thing. I'd like to have that as emergency. The schedule that we were working with had the notice to proceed on March 18th, so we can't move forward until we get permission from you guys. If anyone would like to see the rest of the contract, this is all the ODOT LET stuff and everything else, but there's a ton of stuff. That's the project that will have 10% of the design we pay for and 5% of the construction costs, so this initial first one, we're going to have about $40,000, $45,000 in the design out of, you know, $400,000, so pretty good deal. And then, as we've noticed, if anyone's been down there, you can see the outsides of the tunnels or the walls are starting to road away, and it's starting to actually come back in, the sediment's coming back into the tunnel, and we're having to clean it out, so that needs to be taken care of as soon as we can. 2022-15 is the body camera grant. That's also emergency. That was grant funding that Chief and Annette were working on and were able to obtain through, what was that, chief? It was Department of Justice?
Department of Justice.
So that's a $16,000 grant with a $16,000 match that we'll do to get all new body cameras. And then also, we have 2022-16. It's appropriations. We had American Recovery Act additional funds of about $1,000. We need that just appropriated so that we can actually utilize it. That was part before we had $269,000 plus. That was used directly for the temporary water line project, and then this money can be used for utilities like that also. That's all I had on that. Meetings, I had like 14 meetings last couple of weeks, various contractors and back and forth and entities and the new building and grounds guy from Belmont County, Hess Substation Preconstruction, some other things. Completed projects, I did hear back yesterday, or not yesterday, but Friday, from the Ohio EPA, the orders and findings, they did give us a four-month extension on our switch from the water to Belmont County. So we're going to kind of concentrate this summer on leak detection and finding out where our water loss is at. As I mentioned, we had a Hess Substation Preconstruction meeting. They're anticipating starting in the next couple of months. Had the design proposal for the National Road Bike Way, which is what we mentioned before. We also ordered the new servers for the city building. Part of that was just because of the, what is it? It's the new software that we need for our utilities, for our metering system. Also submitted grant paperwork for the capital budget for the rec center for some work down there with some stuff. We got our spare pumps back from the existing connection at the water plant. Those were rebuilt, so we've got them back now, so we've got two pumps in reserve. We also submitted the two loan applications to the EPA and are working on getting the other one to the OWDA for our distribution in the I-70 water line projects. Upcoming projects, got quotes to do, the water tank inspections, those are due this year. We're still working on some of the lift stations, updating our standards and details for our streets and things. Still working on the I-70 water line, back and forth, we're getting the funding there. Trying to set up the infiltration and inflow control plan, stuff going on this summer, which includes smoking the sewer lines to see where we're at with things. Still working on the potential property purchases that we discussed before. Nothing new to report there. Administrative policies and procedures, we are working with a potential HR firm, going through it, as I mentioned earlier. At the finance meeting, we have the K-9 wash and dryer station, and we're working on the police locker room layout with that stuff, too. Departments, electric department's still doing maintenance, equipment restocking. We had the advertisements for the open position. We had three applicants apply, and we had three interviews. We just finished the last interview today. Three really good quality candidates, I think. It actually has kind of created another problem, that they're really very, very close, so we might have to do some more interviews with them and do some other fendingling to see what we can come up with. Water and wastewater, we've been fixing hydrants, curb boxes and valves, getting the guys out and fixing some of the stuff that's been neglected for a while. Still working on the I-70 project, as we mentioned. We're getting quotes in for the new rake at the West End Plant. We have eight water line breaks because we just had the one this weekend, so we're still doing all right there. The East End Water Connection is done, except for the upper building and the chlorine booster station. We're still waiting on those, but we are actually officially connected. Still got some lift station issues. Also, we received quotes for generators for all our lift stations in the rec center. That's a big number to swallow, and I'll be looking at that. We're also looking at doing a grant for EMA for that, so hopefully we can get some of there. Street department, been patching potholes, storm cleanup. They're still out with the chipper doing some additional cleanup and picking up some of the stragglers. If anybody has any debris or anything that needs cleaned up, please let us know, and remember, this is storm cleanup stuff, not somebody cutting a tree down, wanting a tree removed from their property. We've had a couple of those. Paving, as the mayor mentioned, we did meet. They are anticipating a mid-April, if not late April, opening of the asphalt plants, but obviously the cost of the asphalt's gone up, so we're kind of doing, I don't want to say a negotiation dance back and forth with them, but we're in discussions of some things. Rec Center, I'll let Mark hit on that with some of the stuff, the updates there. Police, still waiting on the pickup of the trade-in for the two old cruisers. Those are still sitting out there, but the new cruisers are in service and being used. Radar signs, we've got installed on Maple Avenue in North Sugar right now, and then under Good of the City. No one's out sick right now that we know of, and as the mayor mentioned, we did receive Tree City SAS again for 20, 21 years in a row, and also, this marks the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day, so we will have a celebration on May 6th around 1:00 P.M. and setting that up and seeing what all needs to be done and who else is going to be invited there, but council is always welcome. It, stuff like that will keep you guys updated. That's really about everything we got running down.
Does anybody have any questions?
One question. The upper building on the East End Water, what is the upper building you're talking about?
The other building.
Oh.
The other building, down at the water plant. We've got our water plant and then our existing connection to the county. It's in that little block building that's right next to our plant. As part of that East End connection, since it had been over six years since the plant had been, or I shouldn't say plant, but that connection had been run, the pumps, we had them replaced, and we're working on the valves to get it in because I figured that at one point, as soon as we connect over, they were probably going to crap themselves, so we just decided to go ahead and get them updated. We got new pumps in there now, and we kept the old pumps and had them repaired and renovated so that we have backups now going with stuff.
I thought you said upper building.
No, 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 other. Yep, no, other building.
The upper building.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. What was the cost of the backyard machine, the current cost?
The current cost, $221,840.
Okay, and the excavator? Okay, and these will be used on a regular basis, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the backyard machine is something more, I'd say it's more geared towards the electrical department, but we've got a lot of lines in the back of houses that we need to get repaired, but we could also have a bucket with it, and we could use it for tree trimming, too, where we can't get our bucket trucks into, and the excavator will be used instead of the back hose for water line breaks and any other digging that we have because our back hoses are starting to die.
And who's the potential HR firm?
We're still in negotiations with them. It's, what's the name of his company?
Our contact's Zach Abraham, and I want to say Abraham Sessions, but that's not right, so I'll have to...
So we're still in the process of negotiating that, looking.
We don't know the name of the firm. I do, I'll find it. I'm just having a brain... Okay. So these machines will be used often, correct?
Yes.
Or is this just?
Yes.
For a certain period of time and then?
Nope.
Not used at all?
Nope. The intent is they're going to be used all the time. That's why we're only getting one mini excavator to share between all the departments.
I mean, is this just something during the water line repairs that we're about to get into, or is this?
This is our water line breaks and the things that we have, because a lot of the times where we get into the back hoses, where there's other water lines, other sewer lines and gas lines there, we have to hand dig things, and this will allow us to actually be able to have a little bit more control and dig.
Donnie, want to say something?
Not to interject, but the electric department needs that as well. We have one particular underground service that we can't get a regular machine into that we have to replace now. We have a lot of things behind houses, especially out around core line, out through there and everything. The backyard machine will also be able to set poles as well, that we can't get back in there with trucks and stuff, transformers. It'll do everything that we need it to. It'll actually fit through the, narrow down to 35 inches and go through a regular walk-through gate, and then it'll expand out and we can use it then.
Okay. Thank you, Donnie.
Sure.
And Linda, the name of the company is Align, excuse me, Align H-R-A-L-I-G-M. Thank you. You asked me too fast.
I would assume that also that backyard machine would be much safer for the guys than climbing poles.
Yeah.
Because they're going to have to climb between a lot of wires where somebody could have a serious accident, and this would also be a big safety issue also.
Yes, where's the Align H-R, where, where are they out of?
They're out of wheeling.
Wheeling. Is there any, we check for, like, they use an Ohio vendor possibly, instead of somebody out of state? The problem is where we're at. I mean, if you look at who we had before, they were out of Columbus, so we're still looking...
Yeah, we were paid to our driving time each way.
Yeah, we're still looking if there's anybody local, but being in this area.
There is not in Eastern Ohio. Mike, there's not in Eastern Ohio.
So we're trying to stay local, but, you know, obviously, we would like to stay in Ohio, but, you know, where we were before was Columbus, so we were paying a lot for travel time.
Okay. On to your question.
Yeah, I was just going to go back to that backyard machine. The bucket for a person to go up in, is it equipped, like, to hook chainsaws, anything like that, or is it just a bucket?
No, it has hydraulic attachments to it, so we can use drilling or hydraulic drills and anything like that. But, you know, yeah, we could use just a regular saw, I would...
Probably be able to put that to use on the bike trail as well?
Pardon?
Probably be able to put that to use on the bike trail as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the police chief's report. Chief Armentz?
Good evening, council. Happy to report first off that Happy Tails Pet Salon has offered to send our K-9 handler to a three-day training seminar by Blue Line K-9 in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and pay his way there. So we're looking into, there's a couple other K-9 handlers that he's familiar with that are going to that. Maybe they can room together while they're up there, and he can get the whole thing free of charge. We also have two officers scheduled to go to a two-day lockpick and specialized entry techniques training course sponsored by West Liberty University, and we have another officer just got scheduled for a three-day less lethal impact munitions instructor course in May. This is our current less lethal impact and chemical munitions instructor, but his certification ends this year. He needs us to recertify. That way he can do the whole department for the next three years. We recently received reimbursement through the Ohio Attorney General for approximately $4,000, which covers half of the cost of the mandatory continued professional training for all the officers of the department, which that helps a long way. The Department of Justice, as Jeremy mentioned, for the body worn camera grant, about last week, finally approved our policy and procedures, so the drawdown of those grant funds should be available very soon pending this legislation. Thank you.
Good job.
Do you guys have any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, Matt. Move on to finance director, Elizabeth Williams.
I'm sorry, Annette Williams.
We had a finance committee meeting tonight, and we went over the reports that I prepared for everyone, appropriation status, the expenditures and the revenues. Everything's on target for this time of year. And then I forgot to mention that Jeremy and the mayor and I will be meeting with our insurance company to start looking at some prices for insurance. Our policy runs out on May 1st, our health insurance. So that's it, I guess. We'll see what they have to offer. I've looked at some other independent places, but I'm not really coming up with anything better than what Shoneman has shot for us in prices.
Does anyone else have questions for Annette?
Since the time you've been here, have you seen an investment policy for ordinance?
No, I haven't.
Going back to the finance committee meeting, for those that weren't here, there was a discussion about investment of monies. We have a CD that's coming due April 1st. We need to, Mike, you brought this up, we need to establish that investment committee per the charter, and it says that by ordinance, we're to provide for the custody of funds and bank deposits and investments. So the question is, do we have an ordinance? Where would it be that would have investment policy? If we do not have one, we need to have one per, I looked it up, it's chapter 135 of the Ohio Realized Code. And to answer our chair's question about where you can deposit funds, you can do government, US government-backed securities, CDs, you can do money market funds, state treasury, asset reserve of Ohio, that's Star Ohio, now accounts, and any other investment, Ohio investments that are allowed by law. But 135-14 sets forth where you can invest, but we need to have an investment committee, and that investment committee needs to create a policy about things like the scope of the investments, the standards, diversification, et cetera, et cetera. If we have one, it's probably really old.
Probably.
And this goes back to the charter, you know, just that one section, when you take, start looking at each piece here, this is where this stuff needs to be amended over time. But I think the starting point is, you know, the charter says that we shall have an investment committee of three, so we don't have a choice. So we need to do that. That needs to be established, however, whoever those three people they want to be, you know, if you, the chair of the finance, somebody else, it doesn't matter, but we need to have it when it says shall. And then that committee can create an investment policy, and we have one, we had one at the county level, the county still has one. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can get, even look at another jurisdiction that may have one that's going to comply basically with one chapter 135. So just as a matter of an update for those that were here, and then just a little background for those that were here, that's something we really need to do. Thank you.
Any other questions for Annette? Okay, I'll move on to planning and zoning.
Thanks, Jim. Council, you may remember that in previous council meetings, I mentioned that I was working on the annual stormwater report that must be submitted to the Ohio EPA. I submitted that report last week, and they have received it, and I expect everything to be okay. St. Clairsville is considered an MS4, or a city that has stormwater that discharges into surrounding creeks and rivers. EPA wants us to record projects within the city that may have an effect on stormwater, stormwater downstream, and explain how we incorporate ways of controlling stormwater and health... and help to decrease the pollution of creeks and streams and rivers and things. So that was submitted. On your most recent utility bills, you received a reminder regarding permits prior to construction. I worked with the need in the utility office to ensure the annual flyer was sent. I also worked with Roberto to ensure the annual flyer was sent to contractors in our local area and they were mailed last week also. I was contacted by, and I've been in conversation with Woted Development. Woted Development owns the home at 113 Claiborne Street. That was the one that was recently destroyed by fire. Woted Development does plan on rebuilding the structure. Savage Construction has already applied for a demolition permit. Due to the impending change in the council meeting time and the subsequent changes to the financing utility committee meeting times, potential conflict was arriving with the time slot for the regular planning commission meeting. The regular meeting of the planning commission has been the first Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. I contacted all planning commission members and regarding that change and Mark's the member of that planning commission, council's representative on the planning commission, so during Mark's report, he can report on what we decided on. Some other managed first settlement, physical therapy is now open. That's the new business at the former convenience. A new boutique will be sharing space with Ohio Valley Interiors. The name will be In Touch with Class. They specialize in home decor. And CBD store located at 122 West Main Street, they will be moving to Pennsylvania in that space already. C and J Moments Photography will move in shortly, probably in the beginning of April. And there may be a new CBD store, we just don't know just yet for sure. I mean, had interest in locating it now. I'll update you more on that.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Does anybody have any questions?
Tom, that physical therapy place, that signage.
On the window?
Yeah, is that temporary?
Yeah, actually I found, they put some things up without any proper permits and I did contact them and they are, there's a certain percentage of a window they can have in that location and the sign's not, and the permit's not needed and they didn't realize that and they just covered all their windows, so they will be adjusting that in the coming months. Yeah.
And thank you for sending me that, National Historic District.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, we'll move on to committee meetings or committees, council chairman, first one will be Mike Smith for finance.
Yeah, yeah, the finance met before this meeting and before I get to anything, I kind of forgot to ask on the funds from the state, the big money, the five million, where do we stand with that?
We've gotten all the paperwork in, we're just waiting on it.
Still waiting on it, okay. And yes, Mark had mentioned about the, we talked about the investment committee and some travel expense issues, I mean, minor things, there's really no issue. I was kind of waiting and by the way, the charter should be here later this week, the new charter. I talked to the lady and she's supposed to mail it out to this week, so hopefully we'll have those, but I kind of hate to act on things until we know exactly what's in the charter. But I'm pretty sure that investment committee is a real item that we need to jump on and I recommend it in the finance committee meeting that we don't renew that C D until we can find some better investment. And then I failed, I think we talked about the January overtime report, is there a February? I think that's where.
I think I gave you the whole year.
You gave us the whole year? Okay.
I'll print it out again if you need it.
Let's see, five million. Then we have, we had gotten some reports, the usual reports that everybody can look at and call in and get questions and I'm gonna get in there some additional reports that will be useful to us and we'll work on those. And last, we have the ordinances. I guess one of the things that we do as council is we approve any expenditure over fifty thousand. So that's part of our job, that's why we're approving these things and Linda had asked about the cost of those and those are definitely over fifty thousand. So I guess some of these are emergencies. The one for the body cameras, I think the police, we can't wait on that. I think we need to get those to them as soon as possible. Hopefully we can pass that in emergency. The federal grant is already in the bank, so it's just a formality. We should pass that also. It's 2022-16. And the 2022-12 Jeremy's requesting, those are the bigger items for the equipment. And Donnie mentioned he could use those as well. And as far as finance, with all concerned, I don't know, these other ordinances, they have to do with finance, so if we could pass those on in emergency tonight, we should probably do that.
Any questions for Mike?
Do you have a current amount on that C D?
The amount? I think it's a million?
That's a megawatt.
And the interest rate's 20.35%, which is nothing.
Whatever is done, and you may have already done this, I don't know, this is the new part of me that doesn't know, whatever is done has to be approved by council for the charter. So I assume we do, we do an ordinance on that, whatever is decided in the end, whatever you decide and bring to the committee as far as an investment, and that has to be memorialized in an ordinance per the charter.
So we might have to actually have a special meeting for that.
Well, that's why I was asking if, you know, that it comes due April 1, you have seven days, we meet on the 4th.
Yeah, we should be.
The question, the question would be, that goes back into what I would call an operating account temporarily until we look at a, that's, you know, that's the part I don't know.
Yeah, I guess we could do that.
And then that way you're not rushed to make an investment. And if you could go into the operating account for a short term and, you know, maybe you get a hold of Star Ohio, in my opinion, that might be the best investment going right now.
I'll start looking.
That's my thoughts. I don't know that we need to be rushed into redoing a C D if we can, even if we get 1% which we may or may not do.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The banks are not probably gonna get much from just the banks, so I can contact Star Ohio.
I think that's the best bet.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to utilities. Tara, do you have anything on utilities? Miss Oprich isn't here this evening. Matt, do you have anything else you want to add? Okay, we'll move on to streets north side, Mr. Vincenzo.
Yes, I guess the big topic is gonna be paving again. You said April, middle of April?
When they had mentioned it, yes. When the plants were gonna open up, back up again, but with the current rates and everything going on, it's one of those things, we're back and forth to seeing what's gotta give somewhere.
And then do we have the 2021 streets in order on which ones can be paved first?
The 2021 one was what I meant with the contractor on going through. The 2022 is what we don't have yet because of the water distribution project.
Okay. And then with the condition of like streets and the base up there on Edinburgh, is that gonna cut some or?
It depends on what we end up doing.
Okay.
I mean, there's, you know, another probably two or 300,000 easily in there, it's just base materials. So I mean, that's almost a whole nother package of paving what we had anticipated, so.
Would they have to do the base on everything or is there some?
No, just, well, for that whole street, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're worried about. Yeah. Now, other streets, no, because we've got some that have some pretty good base, some that are draining well, so we don't have to do that with every street, but that's one of those streets that, yeah, it needs it.
And just one other comment, when do they normally start like with the street sweeper going through now? Is that coming up or?
Did we get it back yet? We had it for winter maintenance, did we pick it back up yet?
No, they're just finishing maintenance on. We'll be getting it by the end of the month here.
End of this, end of this month, okay.
Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, south side, streets, J C, Thresh?
Never quit.
You have anything on safety, J C?
Just that machine would be really helpful and make a lot more safer.
Okay, we'll move on, building and grounds, Linda?
No report.
Planning commission, Mr. Thomas?
No immediate report as anything pending, but to finish up what Tom alluded to with the emails, is the planning commission, its meeting will now be on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM.
Okay, we'll move on to fire district, Mr. Jordan?
All of these are at the recommendation of the fire chief. The board approved the part-time pay rates as presented, also approved the renewal of the employee assistance program in the amount of $2,300 through the employee assistance group effective 4/1/22 through 3/31/23. Also, the board approved the memorandum of understanding with local 3667 as presented and the purchase of a 2022 wheeled coach ambulance, F-450, four-by-four gasoline chassis in the amount of $2,009, $209,000 through the Ohio DAS state term schedule to be budgeted and paid in 2023 upon delivery from the Capital Projects Fund. The board also approved the purchase of wildland equipment from Johnson's Fire Equipment Company in the amount of $17,307.31 in accordance with the Ohio D N R grant. Other items of discussion were a physical therapy, mobility enhancement and injury reduction program, which sounds super great. I think it's very good for these people to have that because of what they do. They, you know, their mobility is so important for their job. And also the health insurance renewal.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Does anybody have any questions for Linda on fire?
I have one. What was the MOU with the union? What did it involve?
Let me see, I don't have that. You all just call chief on that. Yeah, that's, I don't have that, I don't have that in notes.
Any other questions for Mr. Jordan? Okay, Mr. Thomas, Recreation Department?
There will be a meeting this coming Thursday at 4:30. The grants that we alluded to, Jeremy alluded to earlier, thank you to Eric and the staff and to Roberta and to Jeremy for the help, especially with the capital bill. That is not something to fill out five minutes and send into the, to the state legislature. So those grants are in, no real timetable. The capital bill money, which is the $400,000 that I talked about at the last meeting, that usually goes into the, into the summer when the new biennial budget is approved by the state. The summer concert series, 99% completed. Eric will have a final lineup, et cetera, by our April 4th meeting. Again, it begins Memorial Day weekend, so we'll have a report on that. Linda, the Easter egg hunt, Saturday, April 16, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Southern Florida. The new gym floor will be installed April 11th. Prior to that, there's new gym lights going in there also, so those will be installed first, the lights and then the floor, and then the facility will reopen, leave the new floor, the new lights by April 1st, or May 1st, I'm sorry, April 11th for the installation of the floor. So it'll be a couple weeks thereafter and then they're turning May 1st to go from there. Other than that, you know, some, the usual things, wow, that was a committee meeting, lots of things going on. There's a new Zumba class that starts Wednesday night, et cetera, so they're all working very hard down there.
Yes.
Yeah, they're doing a really nice job and everyone's looking forward to the summer concert series, so. Any questions?
Bafflers, what are they?
Where, what's the status of them?
Jeremy?
Still working on that to determine, going through, one of the things with the insurance company was able to say that I would be able to function as an employee of the city, as an architect, so we're working on that to try and save some funding for that and then get that going through. Linda, they had problems with it this weekend again.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay, park district, Mr. Jordan?
No report.
Okay, that concludes the regular agenda. We'll now move on to Law Director Elizabeth Click on ordinances and resolutions.
There are six pieces of legislation before council tonight, and so I'm gonna take them one by one. The first one is resolution number 2022-11, that's the resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contract awarded in 2022 and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance or a resolution that you do pretty much on an annual basis. It allows the city to purchase their salt supplies for the winter. Difference between this one and last year's is we've increased to 700 tons versus 600 tons. We must commit to the contract no later than April 29th at 5:00 PM. So that's why there's emergency legislation on it, but you can do three reads to meet that deadline.
Okay, so this time, Dick, would you read the 2022-11?
Resolution number 2022-11, the resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. Does anybody want to act on that or do you want to read it? Tara?
I note that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Can we have a motion through a second? Okay, we'll take a vote on whether or not to consider this emergency to pass this evening, so take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Okay, we'll read the ordinance again, please.
Resolution number 2022-11, the resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we need a motion to address this.
So moved.
Butler, second, and I'll take a vote on passing the resolution itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
2022-11 has been passed.
Okay, the next one up for consideration is ordinance number 2022-12, and this is an ordinance providing authorization to the Director of Public Service's safety to solicit competitive bids for certain equipment under the cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency. And this is to purchase the backyard machine and the mini excavator.
Okay, read this, please.
Ordinance number 2022-12, an ordinance providing authorization to the Director of Public Service's safety to solicit competitive bids for certain equipment under the cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. And this has been requested as an emergency due to the increase in prices. Does anyone wish to take any action?
I note that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declared emergency.
You have a second? Give him a second. Okay, we'll now take a vote to see if this will be passed as emergency legislation.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Oh, oh, and it's not here. Was, was there money funded that you said last year in the budget?
No, we put it in this year's budget. We got quotes last year, and it was discussed last year, but it was, the budget was already passed by the time we got the quotes and discussed.
And that was for both pieces of equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but both are specific light items in the budget this year. But with the price increases, that's why we thought it was better to save, to ask. Yes.
In the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to consider this emergency legislation. We'll now take a roll call vote to see if council wishes to do that.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, Jake, would you read Ordinance 2022-12 again, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-12. An ordinance providing authorization to the Director of Public Services Safety to solicit competitive bids for certain equipment under the Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does someone like to make a motion to pass this? J.T.? Terry? And I'll take a roll call vote to pass the ordinance itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ordinance 2022-12 is passed.
Okay, next up is 2022-13. And this is the ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 71.03. There are seven parcels, and we've attached parcel numbers and the amount of acreage included in each parcel, along with the tax maps, should you want to see where the parcels are located.
Do you need to follow the emergency?
Council, at the last meeting, requested it be emergency.
Sorry. Okay, Jake, would you read the 2022-13 again, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-13. An ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we will now take, J.C.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
A second, Mr. Thomas.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is this going to be considered emergency? We need to read the ordinance again, please.
Ordinance Number 2022-13. An ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass this? Terry and Lynda. Take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Members are in favor.
Okay, 2022-13 is passed.
Next up is Ordinance Number 2022-14. This is an ordinance authorizing the City of St. Clairsville to enter into a contract for the engineering of the Belmont National Road Tunnel Rehab, PID 108774, and declaring an emergency. This is for the bike trail tunnel. And the agreement that you're authorizing, Jeremy, to sign on the city's behalf is attached as Exhibit A. There's additional documentation up here, about over 75 pages of paperwork, if you want to look through it. This also is an emergency.
We're asking for emergency because it, per the ODOT schedule that they set up with this engineering firm, they asked for a notice to proceed on the 18th, and we're already behind schedule.
Jake, would you read Ordinance 2022-14, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-14. An ordinance authorizing the City of St. Clairsville to enter into contract for the engineering of the Bell National Road Tunnel Rehab, PID 108774, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. Emergency language is in it. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll move that the rules requiring reading of ordinances and resolutions be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Butler? We'll take a vote to see if the council will consider this emergency, emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Okay, Jake, would you read Ordinance 2022-14 again, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-14. An ordinance authorizing the City of St. Clairsville to enter into contract for the engineering of the Bell National Road Tunnel Rehab, PID 108774, and declaring an emergency.
Does anyone wish to make a motion to pass, Terry? And we need a second. Thresh? I'll take a roll call vote on passing Ordinance Number 2022-14.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
All numbers are in favor.
Okay, Ordinance 2022-14 is passed.
Okay, the next one up, the last two are finance ordinances. Next one up is Ordinance 2022-15. This is an ordinance to establish the Body Camera Grant Fund Number 2053 to receive revenue from the U.S. Department of Justice, make additional permanent appropriations for the normal expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency. So that's the Body Camera Grant.
Jake, would you read the Ordinance 2022-15, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-15. An ordinance to establish the Body Camera Grant Fund Number 2053 to receive revenue from the U.S. Department of Justice, make additional permanent appropriations for the normal expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone wish to?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second, Mr. Jordan? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, is this to be considered emergency legislation? Jake, would you read Ordinance 2022-15 again, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-15. An ordinance to establish the Body Camera Grant Fund, 2053, to receive revenue from the U.S. Department of Justice, make additional permanent appropriations for the normal expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass, Ordinance 2022-15, Mr. Jordan? We'll now take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
All numbers are in favor.
It's passed, 2022-15.
And last is Ordinance 2022-16. This is an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Jake, would you read Ordinance 2022-16, please?
Ordinance Number 2022-16. An ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Does anyone wish to take further action on Ordinance 2022-16?
I'll, I'll move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Thresh? We'll now take a roll call vote on the emergency language.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, Jake, would you read, does now be considered emergency? Jake, one more second time, please.
Ordinance Number 2022-16. An ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass Ordinance 2022-16?
I'll move.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
All numbers are in favor.
At least that was enough, yes.
We're out.
Yeah.
We could have.
We had some more.
We had some more.
Yes, we don't.
Thank you, guys. That's a lot of important stuff, guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that is everything on the agenda. The next meeting will be Monday, April 4, 7:30 P.M. in the council chambers. The time change for the council meeting to be changed to 7:00 o'clock will be on April 18, the second meeting in April for the time change to 7:00. And the Finance Committee meeting will be at that time, 6:15 rather than 6:45. The utility meeting will not fall under the 30 days for the first meeting, so the utility meeting in April will be at 6:45, and the council meeting will still be at 7:30. And the first time change for their utility meeting will be the first meeting in May. I think that's it. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
And second, pass the first meeting's adjourned.
And I'll leave it up to the chair. It needs to be established as quickly as possible. And then that committee, because the charter requires.
Yes.
For whatever reason, it's not, it's, it's a charter.